We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, June the 20th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here. If you will, please let us stand as we salute and pledge to the American flag, and then please remain standing for the prayer by our county attorney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come. Thank you for the spirit of contentment we can receive from you, bringing quietness and faith to our hearts. Today, use our county commissioners and other county representatives for your purposes, enabling them to live worthy of your name. May the words they speak bring edification and unity as they build bridges of cooperation. Lord, give them the wisdom to depart from strife, remembering that soft answers turn away anger. We pray in your great name. Amen.
Amen.
We want to welcome each of you here this morning to the Commissioners' meeting, and to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you. I would ask for those that are in attendance today, please let's make sure our phones are on silence, so it wouldn't disrupt this meeting. Commissioners, you have before you the agenda. I'm going to ask, before we approve the agenda, that we would move 4C under Consent Agenda, the Garage Budget Amendment, that we would move it to 10D under the Finance, and that would be a budget amendment for the garage. There will be a change in the amount that was seen out previously in the agenda. Are there any other items that the Commissioners desire to add or to pull from the agenda today?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion with the necessary changes? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. This morning, we have two public hearings. The first would be Project Marlin. I asked Mr. Wood if he would to come forward. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.2, Craven County intends to convey for economic development purposes a fee simple interest in plus or minus nine acres, nine acre tract of land, tract being a portion of lot 19 in the Craven County industrial park. The value of the tract is $20,000 an acre, for a total of $180,000, and the county intends to convey and sell for the same value. The county believes the proposed conveyance will stimulate and stabilize the local economy, result in the creation of substantial number of new permanent jobs in the county, and result in increased tax revenue to the county. The purchaser and LLC to be created by a local businessman intend to invest in a shell building based off of the positive development that has transpired in the industrial park, including the development and construction of multiple buildings, since the shell building built by the Craven Hunter Alliance in 2019.
Okay, thank you. At this time, do I have a motion that we would open the public?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we stand in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair.
We have nobody signed up to speak.
Okay, anybody in the audience desiring to speak to the Board of Commissioners?
Make a motion to go out of the room.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, all right. Just before we move to item two, is there any questions for Mr. Wood on Project Marlin at this time?
It will be on the department's agenda as well.
Okay, all right. Then we'll move to item two, which will be an additional public hearing on Project Bluefin.
Project Bluefin is a local manufacturer of White River Marine who announced plans to invest $34 million in real estate, machining, and equipment in its existing facility, and create and maintain over 500 jobs in five years. To assist in this investment, the North Carolina Department of Commerce has pre-approved White River Marine for a $500,000 building reuse grant under the Rural Infrastructure Authority and Rural Economic Development Division to be provided to Craven County to assist in the construction activities at their facility in New Bern. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158-7.2, the Economic Development Department requests that the Craven County Board of Commissioners to hold a public hearing on these matters at 8:30 a.m., sooner thereafter, Monday, June 20th, 2022, in the Commissioners' room in Craven County Administration Building. All parties are admitted to attend and present their views.
All right, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are in public hearing. Mr. Vice Chair.
We have no one signed up.
All right, anyone in the audience desiring to speak before the Board of Commissioners? All right, hear none?
Make a motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, back to the board. Anything for Mr. Wood before he sits down. He will be coming back. All right? Thank you, sir.
See you later.
All right. All right, item three is the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget ordinance. Vice?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for the opportunity to present to you the annual budget ordinance this morning. Just wanted to highlight to you the process we used, and then I'm going to go over some changes, and then the ordinance in that order. In January, we provided the staff and supporting agencies a memo on how this process would go, and we kicked off that process. The departments and agencies worked the month of February to put together the budget request. In March, they were submitted to the management team, budget team, and we began our work of putting the budget together, which we finished in late April. It was presented to you in May, after the Board of Education, the Community College presented their budgets to you in early May. We had work sessions toward the end, three full days of going through the budget, looking at the different lines, going department by department, agency by agency, looking at all the funds in Craven County, and making various changes and different items that the board wanted to have further discussion on. On June the 6th, two weeks ago, we had our required public hearing. You heard comments at that time, and we are here today for the final piece of the budget process, which is to adopt the budget ordinance. So, we're going to go back to those budget work sessions, and we're going to talk a little bit about what changed once the recommended budget came before the board. We added in our normal special appropriations. The board fills certain agencies with our county funding, and the philosophy for this board has always been that if we didn't fund these agencies this amount of money, we would fund these agencies or this problem somewhere else within the county budget. So, we had that same philosophy as we went through. We did lift the minimum part-time wage for all full-time, or excuse me, permanent, not full-time, permanent part-time positions to $13 an hour, based on the state law, which requires the county to fund both employees of the Community College and the Board of Education to that same benchmark. We had a variety of challenges related to the HCCBG program, which is our seniors program. Commissioner Liner sits on that board. Right up until, I believe, the last budget meeting, we were still getting changes from that group, and we finally got all that worked out, and Mr. Gaskins presented that to you at your last meeting for the new budget. We added additional money in animal services for provisions. This would be the shelter side, to make sure that we had all the adequate materials needed. As you do know, we are staying quite full, so it is important to have a good budget to make sure we can provide for those animals that are in our care. We'll have several memberships, and you're aware of this, there's a state law now that requires memberships where a board of commissioner member may sit on that board. We'll have to bring those back in July and deal with them independently, because if they were in this budget, many of you would not be able to vote on this budget. So we chose to pull those out. We'll deal with those at the second meeting in July. We've added 2% COLA in this budget for all county employees, including employees of the library. Though very strongly that's important to maintain our competitiveness in the market, but also deal with inflation, which is something we haven't seen in many budgets in the past. So, 2% there. If you think over the last 12 months of this board's actions, that actually is about 9%. We funded an additional amount to Craven County schools, an amount of $40,000. This was directly related to their operating expense and things and changes that the state General Assembly may have done in their budget that was released back in November. We also are making a transfer to our capital reserve fund through the budget. We talked about how important that fund is to maintain the low tax rate that we all enjoy here, still be able to keep up with what we need to do from not only a preventative maintenance side, but also enhancements to our county facilities. We're here today, and the document you have in front of you is the budget ordinance. This is the official document that approves the budget. We'll just open that page. Go to page two. Mr. Warren, if you feel like you need to step in any point, please just do that. Page two, we're going to go over the general fund. Section 1A is the revenues. So, of course, by state law, our budget has to be balanced, so whatever our revenue number is, will also be our expenditure number. So this year, our revenues are projected to be $132,397,183. The lion's share of that comes in through ad valorem taxes, but I will note that you have significant financial gains from sales tax and intergovernmental, which are monies from the federal and state government. Sales tax is the bright spot, as we talked about, not only in this budget process, but anytime we've talked about budget in the last two or three years, it's still maintaining. I believe, Mr. Warren, last month was an even better month than we've seen. We are three months behind, so it's still hanging in there. However, we all know that with inflation and things that are going on in the world economy, there's a chance that could end very quickly, but we're not there yet. Item B on page two is all the different functional areas of the county budget. We start with the Commissioners' budget, and we work our way all the way to the end, which it ends with transfers to the other fund. These are the allotments that were set through our budget work sessions. Page three, section two, is the seized property fund. These will be all the independent funds that are within our budget that we have. They're separate from the general fund, either statutorily or for some other reason related to the annual audit. Item A is the seized property fund. It tells you there what you're spending, where it comes from. Item B is the expenditure side. Then on section three, Western New Bern two, we're getting to our fire tax funds. You can see there. The ad valorem taxes is the sales tax, and then what the budget is below. And we'll run through page four, five, six, and seven, eight. And page nine are all your volunteer fire departments that have a tax rate. I'm pleased to say, I don't believe any tax rate increase this year, but I believe two of them decreased in this fiscal year. Page nine, section 14, is the emergency telephone system fund. As many of you know, we're pass-through money from the state. It's collected through your cell phone or your telephone bill. That money comes in, has to be spent only on 911 expenses, and treated as a separate fund. Page 10, oxy tax fund. As many of you know, we do collect the oxy tax in Craven County. It's authored by general statute, and then it's prescribed in that same general statute and how it can be dealt with. Basically, half for convention center and half for TDA and other activities that they do related to marketing. Section 16 on page 10 is the new account Craig talked to you about from the audit. We do have to start showing if we're the guardian. Nope, excuse me, that's the school debt service fund. I apologize there. No, it's not. Representative payee fund, that's the DSS fund. Yep, yep. So this would be the DSS fund that comes through, where we hold people's money in trust. We have to show that for our audit to make sure it's accountable. Then we get to the school debt service fund. This is a fund mainly for the lottery funds. I believe you did a budget amendment this at your last meeting, where we hold certain distributions from lottery in this account, and we pay down the debt that we took on, I believe it was in 2006 and 2009, to enhance our school system. Lastly, on page 11 is our capital reserve fund, as we talked about, vitally important. We continue to make investments in that fund to keep it fully funded over the five-year period. Our school capital fund appropriations in this year, but based on what the school system asks you for from a capital standpoint, none of their projects exceeded $100,000, so this fund will not be used this year. I see Mr. Dale out there. Item, section 20 is a water fund. It is treated as an enterprise fund. As you can see there, there's the charges for service and the various revenues, along with the various expenditures there. Page 14, the levy of taxes. This budget maintains the same property tax rate that we had last year at 56 cents per $100 evaluation, and it also shows you, just below that, the levy of taxes for all the different fire departments. Again, no tax increases in any fire department, but there were actually two decreases in that line this year. Page 14 is the typical budget administration, the authorizations you give to staff to implement this budget over the next year. There are no changes in these lines. These are exactly like they were last year. It allows us to begin the process of rolling this out on July 1st. Page 15, basically, this budget orders to be furnished to Craig, myself, the tax administrator, will be provided to any citizen that may desire it, be maintained in my office. Chairman, that's the budget.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions? Comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget ordinance. Any discussion on the motion? Going back to page 10 there, I don't know, you were talking about the representative payee fund. Do we need to just change that terminology?
We need to take out in the school debt. That was what was throwing me off. There was some.
Just put in that about.
In that account.
That would be DSS?
Yes.
Okay. Please note.
It would just be representative payee fund inside the sentence.
Okay. Please note that, just hypo there. All right, any other comments? The only thing I would say, I commend staff for the countless hours you put into preparing the budget. You've been through a lot of budgets through the years. I think this is probably one of our easier ones. We've been blessed with good revenue, sales tax coming into the county. We know that the possibility of hard times ahead, and I think the Board of Commissioners were very, tried to be frugal in how they appropriated these funds. Our fund balance, I think, is at a point that we've never seen percentage-wise before. I think that's something that not only this board, but prior boards could be proud of. I think it's something that the citizens can be proud of, that we got a savings to guide us through difficult times, and that's been the concentration of this board. So if we hit hard times again, and we will, it is there to carry us through. So having that, we have a motion, we have a second. No further discussion on the motion. Hear none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the room.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman, can I take one more moment? I thank you for that, and I have a great deal of gratitude to the budget team, and that's Mr. Warren, Ms. Parker, HR Director, Jean Hodges, Assistant Manager Lauren Wargo, the Assistant to the Manager Sarah Williams, our Budget Analyst, but more importantly, to all the department heads and all the staff in the variety of areas that we cover that did a really great job of submitting their budgets on time, being diligent in what they did. It's a team effort. I'll be honest with you, we just got a great group of folks here. So thank you to all those folks, and thank you to the board for sticking with us through some really long budget work session days, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item four is the consent agenda. You have under consent agenda the minutes of the June 6, 2022 reconvene session, minutes of the June 6 regular session, the tax releases. Then you go to the Sheriff's Office, budget amendment for the donation check, Sheriff's Office tablet donation, the renewal of the lease agreement for the senior center outdoor activity area. Please note, we've already pulled item C from this. Are there any other consent agenda items that you desire to pull?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve as is. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none. Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes, thank you. All right, departmental matters. Item five is economic development. Mr. Jeff Wood.
Starting, I believe, with Project Marlin, just as we talked about in the public hearing, local group, this was the same businessman that we sold lot 19-2 to. They were building a 20,000 square foot building. If you go out there today, you'll see it under construction. That property has already been sold, and so they're looking to reinvest into that area, into the area of lot 19. This time, they're buying a little bit more acreage, nine acres of property. Their intention is to sell or to create a 40,000 square foot spec building instead of 20,000 this time, depending on supplies. If you've been following along, supply chain issues are problematic, so at the very least, they will start building something so that it can be expanded at a later date, so that we have something in the market. We do need this. We continue to have requests for property around that size. I'm excited about this, because over the last couple of years, we've been in that 20,000 square foot range of buildings that have been built out there. This is taking us to the next level with a kind of a crawl, walk, run strategy of getting us larger square footage, so very excited about it. Answering questions?
All right, questions for Mr. Wood? Hear no questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase agreement for the Project Marlin. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
The next topic is Project Bluefin. Of course, this is Bass Pro Shops investment into Hatteras Yachts or White River Marines. This was in addition to the county grant that I brought to you guys last month, a request last month that you guys approved. Then also, at the time of the announcement, they received a jobs development investment grant. This is in addition to those two projects. Unlike what they call the J dig, that goes directly to the company. This is something that's managed within the Economic Development Office and assists White River Marine in building out their building. And so they'll send me the receipts of the investments that they've made in the building and the jobs that are being created, the same 500 jobs that we talked about last time. So the paperwork is very similar to something we would have already seen. This does not require, or used to, if you remember, a 5% match from the county. It no longer does that. We have email confirmation from Commerce that the match that the county does, so for every dollar they spend, they get reimbursed 50 cents of this grant up to the amount of $500,000. So they'll spend a million dollars, and that will now be its match. So really, we're just accepting those funds and then managing it. The submission for the grant is due on the 23rd. They've put the application together, White River Marine, I have all that, and it's ready to go, and then we'll be awarded that in August. I'll come back to you guys and ask for a budget amendment at that time.
All right, questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the authorization to apply for the building reuse grant for Project Bluefin. Any discussion on the motion? Hear no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
The last item is a transfer of roads in the industrial park, the southern part of the park. Again, positive development. We were not able to do this until we showed private sector investment into the air, into that southern part of the park. This is Corporate Lane, Executive Parkway, and Aeronautical Way that we currently own. We've shown DOT that we've made it to the level that makes them happy. Our engineers have worked through their application process to ensure that there will be potential punch lists that we'll have to go through, so I might have to come back to you guys at some point in time and say there's some things we need to do to finalize this, but this request today is to sign off on the resolution requesting DOT to take over those roads.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All right, we have a second. Any discussion on the motion to approve the resolution for the road transfer? Hear no additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. Next, we have Water Department to approve the annual debt write-offs. Mr. Dale Booth. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Samuel.
Right.
So each January, the Water Department begins its annual bad debt write-off process by looking at uncollected receivables that are older than one year, as of December 31st. Any account balances under $50 are written off. Any account balances over $50 are put into collection status for potential collection through the North Carolina Local Government Debt Setoff Program. This year, we looked at our accounts, and we saw a number of accounts that have exceeded the collection period set by our write-off policy, which is five years. Criteria for determining the uncollectible water receivables is all accounts regardless of balances that are four years or older as of December 31st of each year. This year, that total is $24,432.69, as of December 31st, 2017, which is five years, or four years, excuse me. Going forward, it's estimated that this total will be approximately $20,000 to $25,000. What I understand, that's pretty true. So now I present this for your approval, write off these debts.
All right, are there any questions?
Yeah, how much of that $20,000 and $25,000 do you think we're going to collect?
Honestly, probably not much. So what happens is we'll send the $50, $50 and above, the debt set off, which that's if you win lottery earnings or you get a tax refund, we collect that from that. Other than that, everything stays on the books, and if a customer comes back and wants to open service up, and they have these debts on the books, they have to pay those debts, of course, for a line of service. But I think historically, Jack can speak to that. I don't know that.
Yeah.
Very much of that.
Almost all of this stuff under $50 is uncollectible, except in this.
Well, I understand that, but I'm sure.
I would think most of this, at this point, you're not going to see a whole lot of it.
That doesn't seem worth going after, of course.
Well, and I think that's the point. Anything under $50, we're basically writing it off our books, and Craig's here, and he can speak. So anything over 50, we send to the state. If they ever get lucky and win the lottery, and it's happened, we'll collect that money, but under 50, it's, you know, people leave with a $1.75 balance. There's not much we can do. And a lot of times, what happens is someone will pay what they think is their last bill, don't provide a forwarding address to us when they move. They're not our customer anymore, and that dollar, $10, sits on the books.
So although we write that off, it stays on the books, and if they come back at a later date, we'll collect that debt from them before they get service.
All right, additional questions? Hear none. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Ms. B, I got a second. Commissioner Smith, is any discussion on the motion for the write-offs of the water fund receivables? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, item seven is the Planning Department. We have with us Mr. Chip Bartlett and Mr. Don Baumgartler. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Item I have for you, a simple item this morning. Craven County was awarded FY '16 flood mitigation, or they call FMA grants. These were elevation grants that are FEMA-funded for repetitive loss structures. Probably late 2017, early 18, Craven County was awarded two grants simultaneously to elevate five structures. Again, these weren't storm-related, these were just repetitive loss structures that were applied for. Four out of five of those homes were elevated. Four out of five of those homes were elevated. One of the owners voluntarily withdrew during the program. So at this, all four, again, four were elevated. All the documentation was turned into the state. Craven County was monitored by the North Carolina Emergency Management. And at this point, it had gone to FEMA, and FEMA has returned a letter to the state saying that everything is in compliance. So what we're asking for you today is basically close out on this end.
All right, any questions for Mr. Bartlett?
Motion to approve.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the budget amendments, and I think that's $134,686.41. Any additional discussion on the motion?
Is this, is this mostly low income?
Uh, this was not income based. This was folks that have, flood mitigation assistance or FMA program is for people that have flood insurance. One of the criteria is that you have active flood insurance. And it, if you meet a certain threshold, at this particular house, it really doesn't have anything to do with the owners and who lives there. It's about the structure. So if the structure is on the repetitive loss list for FEMA, if they meet a certain threshold, i.e. they've, they've been, there's been enough FEMA payouts over the last several years, in FEMA's eyes, it's more cost effective to go ahead and spend the money to mitigate and lift the house rather than to keep paying. So basically, the deal is whoever's living in the house, if the home is elevated, they have to, they have to sign a deed restriction to keep flood insurance on the house forever. So the intent is to hopefully not have to pay flood payouts again. So we do this, we've had, Craven County's been fortunate enough to get FMA funding and over several years in cycles. Obviously, there's, there's more houses, there's always more need. But in this case, we had two programs funded simultaneously. One was a three-house grant, one was a two-house grant. And again, this is 100% FEMA funded.
Yeah, I guess I'm getting this mixed up, but we have 11 houses, maybe more than 11 houses, but 11 houses from Florence that have to be raised, that are not being raised because the state won't pay us the administration fee that we want. I'm just wondering if this comes in there.
Yeah, so Commissioner Mark, you bring up a valid point. So Don and Chip, this was the last program, at least Hurricane Matthew?
Right.
Correct.
This Hurricane Matthew. So this fell through North Carolina Emergency Management, the traditional way that we'd always done elevations. Then after Matthew, because some of the challenges with getting the money out, they created a new agency, and Don, that's where the 11 homes you're talking about is called up in that process, which is completely different than this.
Right.
And it's a state centric model, Don, is that correct? Make sure I'm saying it right, where the state actually does all the work that you actually did here, Chip.
Right.
So they're, they're doing Chip's job in that one, and it's slow go right now. I still don't believe they found a contractor yet.
Now, these are most, mostly houses that was in Matthew?
This was, these will be Florence. The houses that Jack's referring to, this FMA kind of goes through, is more the Matthew area. It wasn't directly related to Matthew, but it was between, these homes were actually ironically damaged in Florence, and then they were elevated because the, the way the money flowed. Where we're at now with home elevations and FEMA funded home elevations, that's different than what we've ever done before.
Okay, I realize that.
That the state has decided to do the state centric model and basically take over all the administration.
See, the thing that disturbs me, and I guess this, this is a little bit different, but we have 11 houses from Florence. I forget the number from Matthew. We still have people living in hotels from Matthew, and there was two of them that were on television, is if we have another hurricane, it scares the heck out of me. What are we going to do for those people? We've got 11 now, that I think the state wants to give us 5%, and it costs 15% to administrate those, those houses being raised. But we have a hurricane season we're in. What's going to happen to that? We're going to add to the 11 that we have out there, plus what was in Matthew? Okay, I.
All right, any other discussion? All right, hear no further discussion. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Bumgarde?
Yes, sir. Under item B of the agenda, we had a request to set a public hearing for July 5th at 2022 6:00 PM. And the purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment on proposed changes to the county subdivision ordinance. And these changes are to consider the addition of a provision for a family subdivision. The, just to summarize what we're looking at with that, what's proposed, this is where the grantee is a family member of the grantor. And the resulting lots that would be created with, within this provision would meet the design requirements of the subdivision ordinance. However, there would be a provision exempting the right of way requirements of the current subdivision ordinance. And the new access requirements would be for a 20-foot easement, which would not serve more than four residential lots. You know, a private road disclosure would be required of anyone that would end up receiving a piece of property under that provision. So basically, it tries to address a, a family situation and provide some reduction in the requirement that they would have to have in order to be able to give or subdivide a piece of property for a family member.
All right, questions?
Question, Don, what precipitated this change? Did we have a situation come up that?
Well, we.
Got a problem?
We, we've had some situations that have come up over the years, and as a result of it, the planning board, as well as the, you all as commissioners, have discussed, you know, different avenues that we could possibly address, maybe to try to provide some relief in those situations. And as a result of it, that's why we came up with this provision for, you know, family subdivision. So yes, there's been some.
Okay.
Concerns with individuals that have pieces of property, that have owned it for a long time, they have children or family members that want to live there, but they don't actually have something to meet the requirements of what we call the subdivision ordinance, which deals with a division of a tract or parcel of land. And sometimes, you know, things were done years ago, one way, and then when we instituted a subdivision ordinance back in the 70s, there was additional provisions put on there with the intent that just about any one that was subdividing a piece of property, developer or whatever, that they would go through the process of having the road right of way designed where the roads could eventually, hopefully, be taken over by the state. You know, it starts out as one or two lots, and the next thing you know, it could be eight or 10 lots or 20 lots that are being served by a particular roadway.
Okay, thank you.
So.
All right, additional questions?
I only have one question, I don't have a question, is are the developers required to, to bring their roads up to state standards now?
Yes, sir. They are initially, when we approve them as a subdivision, if there's more than eight residential lots. If there's four residential lots, all they have to do is provide a right of way from four through eight. They have to build a road to state standards, except there would be no asphalt involved. But beyond the eight lots, they are required to bring them up to standards, including pavement. And they're inspected by the Department of Transportation for addition to the system. They aren't eligible to be added until such time that they have the proper number of homes on those properties. And a lot of times, that's what causes a problem with maintenance, no one taking care of the roads. It could be, you know, it could be five years, it could be 20 years, it could be drainage issues, it could be potholes in the road.
That would form, that would go back to the developer to make the correction.
It would go to.
Are we allowed to press them for that?
It, it could go back to the developer, but a lot of times, the developers, you know, they may not actually be in existence or in business anymore. It might be, you know, somebody that had some land and just subdivided it, and now they've left the area, so.
The length of time would depend on the number of houses, then?
Yes, sir, and the economy as it relates to building.
Okay. All right, any additional questions? All right, hear none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to set the public hearing for July 5th, 6:00 PM. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Don. Appreciate it. Item eight is information technology. We've got several here. Mr. Gene Hodges, you're going to lead the conversation?
I'll lead, I'll, I'll lead the parade.
All right, good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody doing today? So today, we want to talk about our water system and the telemetry project we've been talking about. So when Hurricane Florence struck Craven County, the water system, telemetry and SCADA system that serves the western part of Craven County's water system was severely damaged. This system is the communication conduit that shares information between the wells, the water towers, and water plant that allows the water system to operate properly. Since the hurricane, the system has had a number of failures, and each site requires daily in-person inspection and manual adjustments in order to maintain proper working function. In October of 2019, Craven County selected McKimmon Creed of Raleigh, North Carolina as the engineering firm for this project. Since then, there's been a considerable amount of time dedicated to project development, design, coordination, and bidding activities. This project will be broken up into three phases. Phase one will consist of approximately 23 miles of additional fiber optic cable to extend Craven County's fiber network to the western Craven County and the Highway 101 water assets. There were maps in your attachments, and we can show them on the screen if need be. This phase will also include electrical and telemetry upgrades to the 17 water asset sites that will allow those sites to communicate with the SCADA system at the water treatment plant near Lewis Farm Road. The bids for the electrical and telemetry upgrades will present, will be presented. New fiber being installed from approximately the northern end of the Slocan Creek Bridge and Havlock to the area adjacent to Roger Bell New Tech Academy. And phase three will consist of new fiber being installed from approximately Grantham Road to Havlock West End Fire Station. So the bids we're talking about today is just the fiber in phase one, which is the 23 miles of fiber that doesn't exist now. After two earlier attempts to bid this project, Craven County received and opened one bid on the rebid date of May 26, 2022. TRC Construction, Inc. was the apparent low bidder with a bid amount of $2,375,442.26. The recommendation of award from the engineer on the certified bid tab is attached. Attachment number eight is a project ordinance amendment and related budget amendment in the amount of $4,874,378. That, that funds this phase of the project. The amount's broken down as follows. Construction of $2,375,443, capital outlay over 5,000 of $640,000. Engineering and design of $1,668,900. Contingency of $190,035, or total amount of $4,874,378.
Wow.
So the amount for the capital outlay over 5,000 represents the needed network switches that will be purchased by the IT department. The engineering and design amount represents the estimated design cost for all three phases of this project. The contingency amount represents an 8% contingency on the construction costs. This budget amendment is being funded with American Rescue Plan funds that have already been received by Craven County. The request is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a project ordinance amendment and associated budget amendment in the amount of $4,874,378 to fund this project and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement with TRC Construction, Inc. to perform this portion of the construction related to fiber installation for phase one. Staff and representatives from McKimmon Creed are available if there are any questions by the board.
All right, questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the project ordinance amendment and associated budget amendment. Are there any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Board. Thank you. All right, item, agenda, agenda item nine is the Human Resources Request to Amend the Personnel Resolution. Ms. Parker, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Board. The Craven County Self Insured Health Plan will experience a 5% rate increase for fiscal year 2023. The rates of retiree health insurance paid by the county are specified in the Craven County Personnel Resolution based upon the fiscal year 2122 rates. The 5% rate will be passed along to be paid by retirees unless the healthcare coverage for retirees' policy is amended to reflect the fiscal year 2223 rates.
All right, any questions?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve the amended personnel resolution. I have a second. Second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next would be the Finance, Mr. Craig Warren. We've got several budget amendments this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. I have several budget amendments, year-end budget amendments for you, for your consideration this morning. The first one is for the health and workers' comp benefit claims. Health insurance and workers' compensation benefit claims experienced year-to-date through May are running ahead of budget, 9.3% and 79.5% respectively. As a result, we are expecting that the total claims that will, that will be paid will exceed our original budget projections. It is estimated that an additional $775,000 will be needed in order to cover any outstanding claims that have been incurred or will be remainder of the fiscal year. Additional revenues received that were over budget within the self-insurance fund have been identified through insurance premiums and additional product provider rebates, and those will be used to increase or to offset the increased expenditures in the fund.
All right, any questions? Hear none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $775,000. Any further discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, B. Thank you. Okay, the second budget amendment is for our sales tax transfers to the School Debt Service Fund. The sales tax collections year-to-date through the month of June, that would be nine months, are currently running 17% ahead of budget. With three months remaining of collections in the fiscal year, those would be for the April, May, and June time periods of collections are still remaining to be booked. It is anticipated that they will, that our collections will exceed our original budget projections. As required by general statutes, a portion of the Article 40 and 42 sales tax distributions to counties are considered restricted and must be set aside or used towards school capital or debt service. It is estimated that an additional $1,325,000 in budgeted sales tax revenue will be needed in order to continue transferring these collections into the Debt Service Fund for the remainder of the fiscal year.
All right, any questions?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of $1,325,000. Any discussion on the motion? Hear none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
All right, C.
Thank you, sir. The, the next budget amendment is, is for a transfer, a year-end transfer to the Capital Reserve. During the current fiscal year, the county has experienced enhanced revenue collections over what we originally budgeted from various sources. Those include an additional 1.8 million in revenues collected from our Medicaid sales tax home distribution, approximately 1.7 million from our sales tax collections that came in over our original projections, and approximately $487,600 from sales of property at the industrial park that have occurred so far this year. At this time, it's requested that these additional revenues be set aside and transferred through the Capital Reserve Fund to fund future capital projects and expenditures. It is also requested at this time that we go into the fund balance and pull out additional $389,000 that have been identified as land sales at the industrial park that took place over since Mr. Woods has been here and included in that amount. That would bring the total requested on the budget amendment to $4,376,000, or $376,600. And of that amount, $876,600 is related or would be identified as sales that occurred at the industrial park and would be set aside for economic development purposes within that fund.
All right, any questions?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of four million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none? All, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
I just want, one final note on that one, if, the Board, if, if you look into your CIP documents, this transfer will fully fund our CIP for the next five years. So we're fully funded.
Five years. That's good. All right, Mr. Creel, are you gonna come up and do the next one?
Yes.
Okay. That would be ten D, the budget amendment for, um, the garage. You should have that budget amendment before you there.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
Uh, in consult with Finance and further analysis of the garage supply, it's determined that the original five thousand dollar budget amendment request, that's printed in the agenda, would not provide enough for the funds for the garage, requests additional funds to complete the billing and services needed for the month of June. There have been numerous unanticipated repairs recently involving high-cost components related to air conditioning parts and parts that are having to be switched out based on availability, rising inflation, et cetera, and county vehicles. While vehicles are, repairs are expected, having many expensive repairs over the span of fiscal years caused expenditure lines to fall short, budget amendment will allow us to finish processing the vehicle service and repairs without delay for the month of June.
All right, you heard the request. What's the desire of the Board?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment of twenty-five thousand dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, Commissioners, Agenda Item Eleven is appointments.
You have there before you the pending appointments, some of which, again, we will discuss in the month of July. Um, you have current appointments. The first one is the Craven Agent Planning Board, Ms. Anita Douglas, Commissioner Lainer.
Sir, put that on hold. She has withdrawn her nomination. She does not want to be reappointed.
Okay, all right. I'd ask that that be deferred. All right, next would be the Newbin Planning and Zoning, uh, Mr. Black, his term expires. He isn't eligible for reappointment.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Black, uh, informed me that he thinks that the city is not going to recognize this appointment by the county. Now, he doesn't know, but they've already get away with two appointments that we had. This might be a third one, I'm not sure. Do you know anything about that, Jack?
I don't, sir, but if you'd like, I can check with the city.
He thought that they were gonna not honor it, but, uh, that was his thoughts.
Nan, have you had any conversations with their clerk? No.
Not at all.
Let me, let me check with the city.
Okay.
Basically, she sent requesting us make an appointment.
Then we have to get, I have to get a, we get a form with all the names on it, right?
We can, unless there's someone identified that's willing to serve.
Yeah.
Can you provide you, um, Gene, I believe you pull it through GIS? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we will defer consideration. All right, Fire Tax Commissioner for Township Five, the vacancy left by Sandy Hammer, Commissioner on
For it to, to the next meeting.
All right, defer consideration. All right, then you have the, uh, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, all seek reappointment, Mr. Swain, Ms. Hardison, and Ms. Kinific. What's the desire of the Board?
I recommend all be reappointed.
I would second.
All right, we have a motion for all of the any nominations. Here none, they will be accepted by acclamation. All right, then you see the upcoming, uh, terms expiring in July. Please take note of them. Any other? Yes, sir.
A question on Mr. Fisher, um, since he lives in Ripper Bend. Is he eligible for reappointment? He is, and I'm working with their, their municipality to contact him and see if he's, to see if he's even interested.
Okay, great. So you're, so you've got, you're working on that right now?
Right.
Okay, got it. All right, any other comments, questions? Here none? We will move on now to the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady.
Uh, no report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next would be the County Manager's Report, Mr. Vike.
I'm inviting Mr. Grady up with me. My report, we got what I have to do together here.
Okay. Do you need that or no?
Um, while Mr. Gray's handing you something out, I'm gonna cover just some other quick, I, I neglected to mention someone at the end of my budget, uh, statement. That was Steve Bennett, our IT Director, who's part of our budget team, and Steve did a great job this year, and he's done a great job keeping us wired in and all those good things, so thank you, Steve, for that. Commissioners, uh, I do wanna mention, starting July fifth, which is actually a Tuesday because of the holiday of July fourth being on Monday, we will have a new start time for our County Commission meeting. I wanna make sure we get this on camera. We've also got a social media outreach campaign Amber will be doing, uh, working in conjunction with Nan. Our new meeting time will be six PM in this room. The first Monday meeting, or if it happens to be a holiday, falls on a Tuesday, will be at six PM. Sign up, Nan, for public comments, public hearings.
Starts at five-thirty.
Starts at five-thirty. So if you're a citizen who wants to speak at a commission meeting, please be here, get your name on the list. We, um, look forward to the change, and we will move forward with that. I know Commissioner Lainer's gonna give you a brief. We, we were able to go up to Raleigh last week, Commissioner McCabe, Commissioner Lainer had a good trip. It was blazingly hot, but, uh, we did meet with our legislators and got some good feedback there, so we'll get Commissioner Lainer to give you an update on that. Scheduled to have a Dick Center meeting last week. Commissioner Lainer, again, uh, was canceled due to a lack of quorum. We hope to follow up on that, and, uh, did check the numbers out, and they were pretty good last month, so we still have some transportation issues and things like that that, uh, we'll need to continue to work on. But, all right, before you, um, to overcomplicate this, I'll try to explain it, but we, we actually own an ambulance at the hospital, okay? This ambulance is actually, was purchased by the hospital and it's used by the hospital, but for us to be able to bill for our EMS providers, we must maintain ownership of that ambulance, and it has to be in use. We then, we receive this ambulance from the hospital for ownership, then we lease it back to the hospital for their use for a dollar a year. That contract ran, will run out the end of this month. This is a two-year extension of that agreement, and I think Mr. Warren, he stepped out, Craig could tell you a lot more about the billing aspect, but to maintain this, we have to have this agreement, so, uh, we're presenting it before you. It is exactly the same agreement we had two years ago when we signed it, except the dates are different.
Yes, and I will just add, um, it's actually a newer ambulance that's being replaced as part of the process, so, um, this is consistent with what the Board has approved, uh, previously, and we would ask that the Board, uh, consider approving it, uh, again, going forward so we can maintain the relationship.
All right, any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ambulance-lease agreement with Carolina East. Here, any further discussion on the motion? Here none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass.
Mr. Chairman, that's all my comments unless the Board has any questions for me.
Any questions for the County Manager? All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next would be Commissioners' Report. Commissioner Mitchell, we'll start with you.
Nothing to report. Oh, I'm sorry, I would like to, um, wish everyone a happy Juneteenth, since this is our, a new federal holiday, and say that I think the Juneteenth celebrations around our communities have been very, very significant and meaningful.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Lainer?
Yes, sir. As manager-related, Tuesday, myself and Mr. McCabe went to Raleigh with the manager, assistant manager, and Lauren, had a good meeting. We met with all of our representatives, to include John Bell. We had good discussions with all of them. Uh, talked about Medicaid. Medicaid is not gonna go through the short session. It probably will be approved during the long session, but they're not gonna take it up in the short, short session to extend Medicaid. That's, won't have to worry about that for right now. We've got some paperwork that we've gotta get up to Senator Perry on that for the numbers that we're looking for. Uh, he admitted that, uh, Senate rushed us through, and the House is not gonna push it. They, they didn't think this thing through as far as the cost it's gonna cost the counties to take on this additional load and the funding that's gonna come down, whether from feds or the state, or who's gonna pay for it, so they're gonna relook at that and take it up in the long session. The bond transparency bill that's forwarded, that's up there now, is not gonna be looked, it's not gonna be going forward in the short session either. That's gonna be looked at, at the long session, and Jack, you can explain that better than I can.
Yeah. Do you want me to go now?
Yeah, please.
Uh, so, this legislation has some language in it where the state treasurer and state auditor, uh, wanted to withhold sales tax revenue up to a hundred and fifty percent of the cost of the audit if an audit was late by municipality or county. While we agree that there needs to be some factor of timely audits, we do not like the fact, as an association of county commissioners, that, that sales tax would be the option to collect. That would be a slippery slope for us, for other things, so we've been opposed to that, and I understand, uh, from speaking with all legislators, Commissioner Lainer, that that was noted and, uh, would have been removed if, if it would have even moved forward, so.
Uh, next one, we talked about SROs and the salaries, thirty-eight and the forty-four, looking at how long that's been in session, how long it's been in there, to take a look at that and bring that back online more of what's actual cost associated with that. I know the sheriff has been up there talking about it as well with everybody, so they're looking at that, and it gets me really upset talking with them, because Senator Berger brought it out, started a conference up there, and it's hard to believe that they're fighting over chump change when this year's budget is going to come in with a six-point-two-billion-dollar surplus for this year alone, is six-point-two-billion dollars, and he has admitted that, but they're not gonna take much up in the short session. They're gonna push it to the long session. Uh, we talked about VSOs, and I brought VSOs up because the federal side has pushed through a bill at the Senate that they're gonna come up with fifty million dollars to put out to the states for VSOs, and I wanted all of them to be aware that any money that we get from the feds to the state normally doesn't wind up down here with us. So I wanted them to make, be aware, if it does get passed, and it's got a good, it's got a good showing in the House so far, it could come down, that if we do get it at the state level, make sure that it comes down to where it's needed, and look at it and not split it up amongst a hundred counties, because a hundred counties don't have VSOs. Right now, we receive two thousand dollars a year from the state for our VSOs, and two thousand dollars a day is, doesn't pay nothing, so make, make them aware of that. Had a good conversation on the airport. The airport is still moving forward. It's still looking good. It's got one more hurdle to go, and it could be two hurdles, because depending on how the budget looks going over to the governor, whether it gets signed or not, so, but the airport i- is looking good on that. Uh, like I say, all of the representatives were, were good. They all sat down to talk to us, all had positive feedback, uh, all were happy with things, the way things were going and what we had done with them, and we thanked them for everything they did for us down here and what was, how we were handling it and everything else, so they were pleased. Darren, you got anything to, I mean, I'll leave it to you when you come.
You say it all.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman?
And?
Mr. Lainer, how strong were they on, on money for SROs? I mean, with everything that's been going on in the United States?
They're looking at it, but they didn't, they didn't commit. They, they were looking at it, they say they've got it in there, but they didn't come up with any figures or any dollars or anything else like that. I mean, the sheriff may have more on it than I do, but they, they said they were looking at it, they knew it, but there was money coming down, but they didn't put up any figures or anything to us.
Because this, to me, this would be a strong point for the Commissioners, uh, and not only the Commissioners in Craven County, but the, all of the Commissioners, uh, that we really pounce on them for, uh, funding, uh, some, some part of the SRO program.
Well, they all admitted there's money in there. They didn't admit to what it was for or what it was going to. There was money for safety, there's money for hardening, and they understood the SROs as far as salaries, but they didn't come up with any dollars or what they were gonna do about it, but they, they acknowledged it, is all I can tell you, Tom.
Okay.
Okay? And manager talked about a meeting we had last week that was canceled with the Dick Center, and they asked me what I thought, because we have to have a contract, and I told them, from my perspective, if I was on the Board and was gonna vote, I would vote for a one-year contract, which we've already got into the budget for this year, to do a one-year contract and not a two-year contract, and see where we stand next year on whether they're gonna fix our problems that we have with transportation and some other issues as far as getting bids down there, but this'll be up to the Board next year what moves forward. But for this coming one, I think, one year, I would only recommend going to one-year contract with them.
Have they've come down on the chairs at all?
Excuse me?
Have they come down on the chairs as far as that?
Chairs, right now, is the back burner.
Hmm.
Yeah. Chairs, everybody was gonna get out if they, if they pushed that chair issue, so that right now, that's on the back burner.
Yeah, that's been going for
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Lainer. Commissioner Smith?
I have a, I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask while the, while the sheriff is here. I think we had some discussion earlier about at least one school that was not able to make contact with the sheriff's office or anyone when they were inside the building, and I'd like to, to know exactly from here, him, if that is, what truth there is in that, and if there are other schools that, as well. The quote, the statement was that some schools in the western Adam County are, when you're in the building, your phones don't work, and that, and they were not able to make contact with you. Is that, is that correct?
Good morning, Sheriff.
So, um, uh, so the question is about the communications at
Correct.
some of the schools in the western part of the county.
I had heard in the past, and this was not confirmed, that there was a problem in Vansborough, and I heard, uh, recently that there was a problem in the, um,
James Smith.
James, yeah, James Smith area.
Yes, ma'am. So, Commissioner, um, we do not, uh, man Vansborough farm life, uh, Vansborough Police Department.
You don't have SRO over there?
The Vansborough Police Department does.
I see.
Um, however, we do stop in when we're in the area and help augment them, especially, uh, since the shooting in Texas, uh, every school has had additional SROs out of, or deputies. In regards to James W. Smith, absolutely, that's a problem. Yes, ma'am. Communications inside there, at times with the hard line as well, but cell phones, our Viper radios, um, about ninety-nine percent of the time do not work unless they move up close to a window or walk outside, and I've addressed that a number of times. I've brought it to the attention of the school board and folks over there a number of times. I'm being told, since the last meeting, that they are putting funding together and processes in place to get those things addressed, but it has been a problem for a long time, and we've documented it.
My next question is, have you had specific training for SROs in the event that there is a, a attack, a shooting, or some invasion of school campus? Because they would need, if, for example, if you're in Vansborough, although the Vansborough Police is taking care of that, they might need to contact more than just the Vansborough Police, so.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, great, great question. So all of our deputies, to include the SROs, do active shooter response training multiple times a year, almost quarterly. Uh, we have had it since the, the shooting in Texas, uh, but all of our deputies do that, from myself right on down to the newest, uh, deputy on the street, uh, with a particular Typically, it's required about annually, and that by no means is enough, so. But we take it a step further. We also train with all of the municipality police departments, as well as our State Highway Patrol counterparts, Wildlife, North Carolina SBI, and ALLE. We all train together on this, so when we arrive, and case in point, Vansborough, there's one Vansborough officer there, we have maybe two deputies, a state trooper, and a wildlife officer show up. We all know how to go in and address the situation together because we've been training together.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff, while you're here, do you have anything else you want to share with us?
No, no. Once again, thank you for passing the budget. It was a very good budget. I think the county manager and his staff are working closely on trying to get the things we need to continue to move forward in regards to personnel, incentives, that sort of thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Commissioner Miff, you?
I would like also to speak to Juneteenth. We are having several celebrations in the area. I did participate in the parade on Saturday. It was awfully hot, but we had a parade, and I participated in several other activities, so I did participate in a few, and I thank Ms. Mitchell for recognizing that and making it to the good.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Mark?
I have no comment.
All right, Commissioner McCabe?
I have no comments.
Chair.
All right, Vice Chair Booker?
I have nothing today.[1759.13]